He has one guy, and I had one guy, but my guy is way high for, well, the numbers are way high.
And I don't think we were, either of us were confident that they, neither one really understood the total scope of work and the complexity, so, so maybe Ceteris would like to continue to be involved in that discussion.
If not, I don't know.
Yeah, which we have is how much.
I got five dollars.
The past, I thought it was five thousand dollars.
He changed me time to one.
The number was ten. The number was ten.
I remember I took three quarters of it.
They took that, that's ten thousand dollars that I was gonna use for line striking and put the walls back here because that mysteriously disappeared out of my.
I was just impressed that we spent thirty-seven cents.
I don't know where I'm at about our, yeah.
Living our budget. No, we didn't, no, nobody brought up one line item on the budget when we spent twenty-five minutes talking about retaining that. Alright, okay, anything else?
No, that's fine.
I don't think we have anything more for you, David. Any comments, questions for the public?
I don't know if you want to talk, touch this one about the tear sheets.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, look that go away?
It told me you didn't wanna do that any longer. I called the company to cancel.
No, I heard it from you.
Yes. Yeah. We want you to keep track of your hours. We wanna get it.
That's what we tell them to do. Okay, it's all written out on those little, little cards?
The old way, just went to that code, which was three or four years ago, and then all your comments disappeared. It was kinda nice, you were grading, and then you'd say, you know, Pragro, and this, and that kinda good idea where you guys.
I will be more happy to write it all out.
In English, we like that.
Yeah, so, you'll just get right rid of the codes, we don't worry about that more than.
That does not mean that we won't end up with some sort of tracking system, but we, none of us believe that we're ready for it or that we're making any use out of it right now.
The, and everything's on here, what pieces of equipment you were working on, everything. And it takes less time to do this.
You're convinced.
Cause at the end of the day, or in the morning, you sit there for five minutes and you do the whole day, and you have that.
Good. Alright, thank you very much. Alright, we're back on the budget. Uh, suggest we start firsthand, skip all the stuff that we have with, what are we doing now, David? Monthly budget review. That right there.
We will get that out the Friday.
Uh, yeah. So we just, yep.
Just cause you walk through doors, they're on the wall.
Uh, page one, we're looking for stuff that we have all control of. And. Alright, uh, so, page one, exactly.
Whatever.
Uh, the last thing that we used to back up, uh, first, uh, our books, I put everything in two thousand fifteen, like, the bills came in in two thousand six, two came up the end of.
Did you get your blue cable buried? Disappeared?
Not yet, it's in the process. Yeah, it's, everything's in the process, yes. He's hoping to finish that tomorrow.
What did you make of the software support?
Um, all of that stuff is paid ahead of time, so it's paid here.
And executive software support is, this one's his name? Greg?
Greg, um, well, there's a couple, there's, um, Greg, Charlotte, she has my smart. Harris.
Did you get your card signed yet?
It's in the process, Harris waiting for one, um, last cable, and then he has to go into, um, Gloria's office and get her computer that she uses for getting assigned.
Uh, do some subscriptions, ask supplies, are there any particular reasons?
I think, um, is, is sixty-six always up here tonight? Well, I haven't shown it ever.
I'm sorry.
Twenty-two hundred, which is one sixty-six.
That's right. And you don't ask us to go on over that?
Um, no, we usually don't. I know a lot of the, um, some of the conferences that I signed up to, they're reasonable, other webinars, I'm gonna try to take advantage of a lot of webinars.
So, executive supplies, do we purchase equipment that we hadn't planned on, or?
Um, supplies, well, and some of our supplies, I believe we have some of the cleaning, that we did a big order, but also we did, um, the desk and chairs and stuff.
Replace?
Um, they replaced my folding, my metal fold-up.
Yeah.
Into a better desk that I could actually function with, and then we needed new chairs.
Well, on that amount, that's pretty much it.
Yeah.
We did approve that.
Yes, you did.
Alright, then executive, new equipment, you pretty much spent that whole thing.
Pretty much.
And that was on?
Uh, new equipment, actually, new equipment, now, new equipment would be my desk and our chairs. So, supplies, I think what you're saying for the supplies, um, we decided to do all the cleaning supplies, so, in bulk.
Okay.
So, I think it was like three hundred dollars worth, which will last us months and months and months and months, if not most of the year.
Alright. Go ahead. We getting into town clerk?
Yes.
Go ahead, you have a question on there?
No, I think, no, do you need any number of, just, I think, a couple, couple.
Number of?
Go ahead. Town clerk, tax collector, and treasure, we have nothing to do with, so, we can look at their numbers and say, that's crazy high, but we can say, uh.
Why do they have to advertise it?
Uh, when they have to do postings, you know, we have nothing to do with elections, correct? That's, uh, electric position, tax collector, treasure, uh, auditors and assessors, we do have. And legal expenses are low so far.
So, our auditors are coming in in a couple weeks, so that's why that goes up most much.
Yeah. And then employee benefits, we have blank lines for our.
Cause we shifted stuff to the individual part.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and everything else is, essential workman's comp. It's gone off, never mind.
Yeah, that wasn't that part of the law?
Yeah. Alright, and part of that lawsuit is that we did our workman's comp.
Right, they're paying for it, they pay for it.
So, most of it, yeah. Alright, now, planning and zoning, not much spend, general government.
I just have a quick question.
Sure.
Under heating oil, you got electric heating oil, what's, what's library, I mean, it says library, but where is that?
That's where I'm at.
Where, page five, second line from the law.
Yeah, page five.
Page five, it just says library. Library, what?
Um, the library has its own, it does for the oil. Yeah, the library has its own, uh, soap, line item for the heating oil.
Should order doesn't pay for the oil?
It does. No, we, it, it, they will reimburse us, but we have to separate that out into, um, the different departments. So, that's how it's coded. It just doesn't say library oil.
Okay, so, could we confirm that that actually is what that line item is?
Yes, it is.
And number one, number two, could we rename that?
I can add a L.
Yeah.
I can say I can add a L.
Oh, we're, I know where I said.
Bottom of page five.
Yeah, I know.
Just that one, that one line that says library.
It doesn't say library, it just says heating oil.
First of all, that's the library. I wonder if this page is, uh.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So, overall, general government's at twenty-three percent. Next section is cemeteries, which is at five percent. Insurance, it's zero percent, somehow I think that doesn't mean what I think it means. Regional associations.
Chris?
Go ahead.
Can I just go back to, uh, general maintenance, the first two lines, what's internet access? Are they putting internet access in somewhere?
No.
Five thousand, no, five thousand.
No, it was, it was, um, discussed and decided last month that they wanted a separate line item for anyone that had internet access, so that is, um, any Comcast bills that come in for any of the buildings.
So, instead of separating that out, we're combining it all together?
Um, yes, and I'm not sure how we would separate that out, because we literally just give a bill. You know, so how would we separate it out, like, like, the police don't get their own bill for Comcast.
But does it break it out by address or by location?
It would, it breaks it out by address, yeah, so, it was just, it was decided that we would just leave it as it is, and then we would, could revisit how we could potentially, if need be, break that up next year.
Is that, is that higher than, is that, how many service, how many drops do we have for the?
We have access here, we have it at the transfer station, we have it, I'm, I'm sorry, at the.
Fire station.
Highway. Fire station, fire station east.
Yep, all stations have it.
Anything else we have?
Does that include the library too, or no?
Oh, I bet the library has one.
See, everything, and all the bills come here, so, I don't get a separate Comcast bill for the highway or ambulance, it all comes here.
I'm just trying to figure out how many, so that's a thousand dollars, if five drops, that's a thousand dollars a year, does that sound like?
It's probably, I mean.
Well, that sounds, that sounds like you're paying eighty, ninety bucks.
A month.
How do you go and you pull the bills?
It's usually, well, it's usually, it's, it's two hundred and nine dollars for one, and then it's eighty-nine for another, we get two separate bills.
Does it include HBO, that's my one.
Sorry, you can't come in and watch movies.
Well, I wonder.
I mean, I could pull the bills, cause there was a big discussion as far as how we would equally break that down.
Alright, let's, let's take a look at that, and we don't have, we do have competition, right? Do all our locations conceivably able to get started?
Oh, God. Like, if you're a spy, they're starting to work. Don't do that to me.
But I think we would like to, at least I would like to see the total cost of a department, you know, without these little costs that are, yeah, but they also have their internet costs and stuff like that.
Cause I would think they'd be able, if you request it, they should be able to give you.
Be able to break it down, yeah.
I'm sorry.
So, let's pursue that, and we can pursue that for next year, I'm fine with that.
Just if we knew what it was, what we're.
What you're paying for it? Could be, like, street light, we're paying for lights around here.
Yeah, and in all seriousness, we probably had to go, uh, break it up. This building should at least have, uh, uh, either satellite or regular cable TV or something like that for emergencies. If we had to open our emergency operations.
How's that we're paying for it already?
Probably. Or we can just go for the triple plan.
Is this including your smartphones and all the practice?
No, it's definitely different.
I don't have a smartphone.
No.
I don't, I don't have a smartphone.
Doesn't give everybody smartphone.
I don't, I don't believe, I have a flip phone on the dash of the ambulance, I'm assuming that is the only phone that we have.
I'm sorry.
So, smartphone for us.
That's it, I just, no.
Yeah, I don't have any.
Sorry.
Well, I don't know, I was on page nineteen, Mark, Greg, it's back to page two.
No, God, you can't be on that.
You're on, you're on page two.
You can't be on nineteen.
Sorry.
You're on seven. Speed three, three. Insurance. Yes. Uh, regional associations, that's another one of those things that we evidently paid for in the first of the year, and we did not budget enough for that.
One of them, I think, is not with regional, but maybe not.
Is there another?
Did I underpay?
No, that was regionalist, um, I can look into exactly what is in this.
I'd like to know what all, what all we're paying for there, and we'll need to watch that on, I don't have buddies. Alright, uh, the police, the chief is, looks like he's on track to spend his wages. Penny, and overtime, I would assume we had some from the beginning of the year, I would assume that that's gonna gradually drop now that we have a second officer. Alright, I tried to. So, I would hope that that should come down. I, I'm not too worried about that one right now, because that does have what? Three months of?
That's, yeah.
And they haven't had any overtime in the last, something, eight.
Yep.
Your big shot, hey, baking, on eight.
Now you're getting ahead of it.
Oh, you can't get, yeah, you're getting in the way of that one. Well, something's wrong, you have to know.
Yeah, we'll get to that one.
Yep.
Alright, uh, police. The prosecuting program, we haven't paid yet. Police department looks like this is all their advertising, we shouldn't need anymore. Alright, the whopper, I'm gonna have to, alright, how, what did they spend?
Four thousand extra dollars. Okay, so, this is what's going on with this, I was on the phone with Harris for quite some time this afternoon, and what has happened with two of these line items, if you go down to new equipment, you're gonna see another huge percentage of they've gone over. When they were coded, they were not coded correctly, so, when we took them in to pay, it went out of a different line item. There's one of them that was for, um, this year, and there's two of them that they bought in two thousand fifteen, they was billed in two thousand sixteen, and that never was brought, I don't wanna say brought to our attention as far as for Carol to put back in, to reverse that. There's another one in there also, so, there's potentially three that we're gonna see what the auditor can do to have it. Two that, I was able to move the one back, and that's only a seven hundred and seventy-eight dollar one, but there's some other large purchases.
Who's Carol?
Um, Carol is, um, Copland, she's the one, she's, um, another accountant auditor that comes and backs all of our, our, um, our accounts into last year, so, and there's several of them. So, but, that's on our radar, it may not be fixed by next week, but that's definitely on our radar, um, and Penny and I have been working on that, so, like I said, I was on the phone with Harris for quite some time, um, getting one of them, but the other one, um, it's, it's a different year, so we'll have to see what happens with that.
Alright, uh, one more, well, before I forget, can you write down this name?
Me?
Oh, yes, Luke Cosmos. Luke Cosmo.
Luke Cosmo.
Uh, we have satellite, our satellite phone is due for renewal with the existing company.
Okay.
And if it's okay with you guys, I would like to reduce that cost from five hundred and fifty-two dollars to four hundred and forty-two dollars, and actually get us some minutes that we can use to fast it every month. You guys okay with that? It's switching the provider, but it changes the number, but it doesn't matter because nobody has the number for the satellite.
Oh, I don't wish to.
But we should fire the thing up once a month and make sure that it actually works. Yeah, um, so, lukecosmo.com.
Oh, Luke Cosmo, I think it's Luke. I do, cause Cosmo.com.
That doesn't sound like a line item.
We're gonna get to that one, but I didn't wanna let that one go before, and what we're looking for is an Iridium service plant, uh, I'll shoot you a link for it, but if you can work with Penny on that, she's been fielding the phone calls from the existing provider. We provide zero minutes, and a dollar's playing on her a minute if you.
I don't know something.
Alright, alright, back to the police, so, overall, police aren't bad, we are working to do some stuff, back to last year, purchases that were made, we're hoping that actually occurs. And what type of equipment was this, you said Harris?
No, Harris is, um, UniSmart, Harris is, uh, software.
Okay, so, these are Harris charges?
No, Harris was the one that I was on, Harris is my support, okay, these charges are multiple charges, there's one for, um, guns, there's one, a Motorola.
Cause I think what we do is, last year, didn't we, cause we had some surplus, we spent that money towards the end of the year.
And that's exactly, I mean, it was like twelve thirty-one, and they came in like the day before Carol was here, so, it was, I mean, it really just crossed as far as getting the paperwork where, I mean, to be.
I think we're on to them.
Yeah, cause those, cause we were bringing in a new officer, and that's why we said, well, I'll get it now, we have the extra money this year, why don't we get it now, and then.
Yep.
Didn't get put in the right year.
If they were, it's when we went back, cause we're like, it, it was like a day that, so, we're working on it.
Well, actually, we had a lot of items in here that are over a hundred percent.
We do, uh, we know that a couple of those should come down, I look at the bottom line and go, police are still at twenty percent of the total spend, um, so, overall, they're low, and, and any department, you know, with, with our approval and can absolutely spend to the bottom line, um, we wanna understand why things are going up and why things are low, so we can budget better next year.
Well, wait till you get to the ambulance.
Oh, I know, scary numbers. Okay, so, the first scary number, two hundred and forty-seven percent, which is twenty-three dollars over budget, um, we've never had a mileage reimbursement policy, cause we've never reimbursed, cause we had the old Explorer.
Right.
Um, I can tell you, I had to make another trip yesterday, so we'll probably be at like five hundred percent, but, that is necessary trips to conquer, that, these are the expenses that we're finding out now that people used to use the Explorer for.
Sure.
Which is good to know, cause at least now we're, it's not even a keeper.
Right, and, and now.
And useful.
Yeah. They can take the trailer and go. So, we got really lucky as far as, as wages go.
Lucky?
Yeah.
Lucky.
That were so low.
That's, that's okay.
That's, we're at seven percent.
That sounds good, yeah.
You can actually parametric.
So, to speak to that, um, we had four of our six people that went through class, got their licenses yesterday, so we have four more responding members in the ambulance with two left that just need to do paperwork and take a task. The really scary one here, the four hundred and sixty-nine percent, is when we were doing the budget worksheet and changed it from five hundred to one hundred, we didn't realize that we were in a contract for five hundred.
I don't have that one.
He's down here on oxygen.
Oxygen, I'm skipping around.
He skipped almost to the end of his section.
He's going on the big numbers.
Right.
Yeah, I'm going.
Seven percent.
Yeah, four hundred and sixty-nine percent.
Turn the next page, like, you look at this one.
Okay, I've got a copy of the budget. Alright, noted on that, uh, that's your oxygen. Supplies, uh, budget, twelve hundred dollars, spent three thousand.
So, what I'd like to do on the budget and for supplies, is I'd like every department to add lifesaving equipment and/or AEDs, because a lot of this is to update the police cruisers, AED equipment with new D fit paddles, batteries.
Have you been doing that? That's what you've been doing?
Right, they've all, the ambulance is charged with them, so, I have to put pads on the police cruisers at one hundred and two dollars apiece.
So, that's contributing to this three thousand dollar spend on a twelve hundred dollar budget?
Yes, and the rest of that was supplies necessary for past state inspection, with the regulatory check that we did, that was the requisite.
I was surprised that, that it passed.
Yeah.
Alright.
It, well, it would not have passed if, anyway.
Alright, so you keep the town, ousted citizens on a wellness program, and people will be okay.
However, for that, a lot of that is bulk supplies that won't need to be purchased again, that's done for the year.
IV fluids and stuff like that, we're at twenty-four percent.
Right, that's.
Bottom line, you're twenty-four percent.
Correct.
We're okay, alright.
The other thing that threw me off was the repairs, and that was not something that I could control, and it's gonna go up because now it has a ball joint going out, so.
You could have wired a new one.
Yeah.
Alright, uh, fire department. Oh, I see one thing crazy out, and that's again, the, it's the mileage program, fifty dollars budget, sixty-nine dollars spent, probably gonna see that all over the place. Well, hopefully, we'll see additional drop in fuel cost. Uh, fire department training, they've gone through a lot of training so far. Got nothing really scary in there, seventeen percent?
No, I, I got something wrong, I think.
I'm trying to update the ones, I may just, it was the ones.
Fire department training's high, but I know that they've done, uh, some training so far this year, um, and they come in at seventeen percent. Force fire, there's been little or no spend, just seven percent, and I really wanna keep an eye on those numbers throughout this year, because I'm comparing how we can cut any of this, just not, not get that. Alright.
Tell them next week.
They come in next week?
Yep.
Nice. Uh, emergency management, we get one big bill, repay that bill, and we're ninety percent for the year, uh, that's pretty much it, other costs that we're gonna. Nothing else is really gonna go there, there may be.
I thought, I thought you were changing.
Yeah.
That to OEM.
Well, I don't know if we can change, well, you could change that.
Are you talking about the name?
Yeah. Obviously, the emergency management, OEM.
Right.
Yeah. And you could reflect that on all those other names, we have that too. OEM, important, oh, yeah. All right, communications, uh, we've got some, nothing crazy. Uh, now we're into DPW, we're gonna skip. Uh, station, we can skip, so, ways we can skip, and I think we can skip to page fourteen, I was gonna say health agencies, we haven't spent any money there, let's go to welfare on page fifteen.
Actually, that's amazing.
Yep, very, very well.
Wonderful.
Welfare.
I guess welfare, well, this has been a sore subject for years among voters, you know, we always, we always seem to spend a lot of money on welfare.
Not this year, not this year.
Well, I'm talking about past, yeah, is this the trend we're gonna continue now, or is not, not to spend money on welfare, yeah, well, all the towns are, I, I, I question this with all the towns, and other administrative assistants in towns, and when people come in, you know, there's people, like, yes, that don't need welfare, you know, they need help, you know, your alibis or something, you know, but when you get people that just work in the system, you know, they come to us or to the welfare office, give whatever they can, yeah, and the other towns, what they do is they're, they send a stack of forms like this, you know, that, for either wants welfare money, has to make out, is this correct?
Yes, so if someone.
Just hand them, hand them the forms and.
So, if someone comes and says they need help, rental assistance, electric assistance, we do, they have to fill out a form, they're verifying everything, their employment, checking all their expenses, and then there's a very certain criteria that they have to meet, so, I can't, if, if you were to come down and say, I need rent, I can't say, yes, I can pay all of that. So if someone comes and says they need help, rental assistance, electric assistance, we do, they have to fill out a form, they're verifying everything, their employment, checking all their expenses, and then there's this very certain criteria that they have to meet, so I can't, if, if you were to come down and say, I need rent, I can't say, yes, I can pay all of that, before I do all the calculations.